6:45 on June 20th, 2016, we call a special work session meeting to order. We do have a forum, public forum. Individuals may address the city council on items not included on the agenda. Speakers required to state their name and address for council records and limit the remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments to fall within the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items discussed at this time. They may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for future report, direct the matter to be placed on the upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak?
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. This is the conclusion of "The Lies of Patriotism" by Chris Hedges that I didn't get to finish last time. Michael Haynes was in the Marine Corps from 1994 to 2004. He was in Iraq in 2003 in the most senior recon platoon, the Marine Corps equivalent of the Navy SEALs, the first force reconnaissance company, 1st Marine Division. He was in numerous raids. Now he's a member of Veterans for Peace and I interviewed him with Rory Fanning for my show. "I was in at the Iraq invasion," Haynes said. "We pushed up into Baghdad and things became very real for me when we began to kick indoors, place charges indoors, and rush into these homes and terrorize these people. Probably about 50% or more of the intel that we got was just dead wrong," he went on. "Busting in these doors, you come into a family's house and there's elderly women, young little girls, three, four years old, just screaming and horrific, just terrified, where they literally soil themselves. They pee their pants. You're taking their grandma and throwing her up against the wall and interrogating her. That hits you right here. It hits you hard. I began to ask myself, what the hell am I doing? If you happen to be a young man in a raid at home, if you're in your early twenties or anywhere in that age range where you can carry a weapon, then by mere association of being a young male, possible insurgent, whatever the case may be, you were taken out of the home to be interrogated. Who knows what happened to them? I know Marines were there all night interrogating them. Who knows if they even made it back to their family? With the drone attacks, you have a range, an outside range, where so many civilians are being killed. Haynes said, it's a terrorist-producing factory. If you lose your child, if you lose your mother, any of your family members to this, we have to think about that. Put yourself in that position. If I lost my child, I would be desperate. What would you do? It's easy to understand why someone would strap a bomb to themselves and blow themselves up. The physical brutality and violence are accompanied by the overt racism that's characteristic of military occupations. We didn't refer to the people in Afghanistan as Afghans, they're Haji. The term Sandnigger, Haji, barbarian terrorist, all of these things were thrown around as if the people were subhuman. The lies of the state and the wider society became painfully apparent. We're sold the idea of we're going there to liberate, we're fighting terrorism, then we realize we're the ones terrorizing people. The two veterans said they have found silence in the act of civil disobedience. Michael Haynes and Rory Fanning say they will continue to fight the bloodlust of empire at home and abroad as a way to heal the wounds of war and a foreign life. "You've got to stand up to confront creeping fascism," Fanning said. "Silence is dissent." From their time in the military, they understand the danger of dehumanizing others.
Anyone else wish to speak? Carry on, we'll move on to council items. Hazard mitigation plan, Morrison County. Tari and Mike?
Mr. President, Members of the Council. The mitigation plan we've been working on, it's been the last three years, I believe. And it's like the emergency operations plan that we adopted from the county. So we're asking you tonight to adopt the mitigation plan. We have this mitigation plan. You've all got it in your packets, I believe it's like 200...
236 pages long.
236 pages long. It's got a lot of good information in it, actually. They did a lot of research on it. Tad Erickson from Region 5 is the one that headed it up. So you have any questions on it?
So the importance of this hazard mitigation document is if there were a disaster, granted, this is the plan, we have some procedures and implementations and things that we want to do. Not everything goes to plan. However, when a disaster hits and FEMA comes in or the emergency, you know, state and national come in and we need some grant funds through the FEMA emergency grants. If we don't have this plan in place, we may not be eligible for those funds.
If you don't... The hazard mitigation plan, if you adopt it, makes you eligible for hazard mitigation funding. So if you want to build a safe house for citizens, install a safe house if you're in a court, that mitigation, and without this, you can't, you'd have to fund it on your own. You know, there's funds out there through FEMA that will help be eligible without the brand.
This will help us prepare for things here.
That's what mitigation plan is. It's kind of, we see it, kind of the bad areas of the city or throughout the county and we try to mitigate to figure out how it can better so it doesn't happen again, is what the plan actually entails.
Bring a disaster in, sir. Emergency operations.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce. Victoria Ingram is the emergency manager and also the communications supervisor for the county. And Scott is the jail supervisor at the county. He's the one that had Victoria's job before she got it. So he was the one that we sat in a meeting with. I think Greg was at some meetings, I was at some meetings. We implemented our stuff through the city, but we might look as a hazard in the city. And we got it.
We have a resolution, if you want me to read it.
The 235 pages?
No. It's abbreviated one.
The resolution, the city of Little Falls, the adoption of the Morrison County All Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the city of Little Falls has participated in the hazard mitigation planning process established under the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Whereas the Act established a framework and development of multi-jurisdiction county hazard mitigation plan. And whereas, as part of the planning process, requires public involvement, local coordination among neighboring units of governmental businesses. Whereas Morrison County's plans includes risk assessment, including past hazards, hazards that threaten the county, the estimation structures of risk, and general description of land uses and development trends. Whereas Morrison County's plan includes mitigation strategy, including goals and objectives, the action plan identifying specific mitigation projects and costs. Whereas Morrison County's plan includes maintenance or implementation process, including plans updates, the plan, or other documents that Morrison County will maintain public participation coordination. And whereas the plan has been shared with the Minnesota Department of Homeland Security, Emergency Management, Federal Emergency Management Agency for review and comments. Whereas Morrison County's All Hazers Mitigation Plan will make the county and participating jurisdictions eligible to receive FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistant Grants. And whereas the Multi-Jurisdiction Plan, the cities that participate in the planning process and choose to adopt the company plan, will therefore be resolved, the city of Little Falls supports the Hazard Mitigation Planning effort, wishes to adopt Morrison County All Hazers Mitigation Plan. So this has been sent to HSCM Minneapolis for their review. Once they sign off on it, it goes out to Washington DC for FEMA signing.
It has a five-year...
Five-year shelf life. We'll start over again in five years.
The plan itself is for five years, but the planning begins before that.
Anybody got any questions? Concerned?
Yeah, if you don't kick that leg out, it might come down on your lap.
It's a trap.
Every time you're leaning, it was a cold, dull, boring.
Is this time-sensitive?
The resolution? It's time-sensitive for us. We have to get all the resolutions from all the cities that were involved in this.
That are participating in the plan.
Participated, so we can get that shit back to HSCM.
I mean, it does have all the jurisdictions.
All jurisdictions that participated in it.
There are the smaller sections that are pertinent just to Little Falls.
No, we've got Uppsala Hillman Motley, Swannville, Peers, Randall, Royalton, Little Falls, DNR, Morrison County Soil Waters, St. Caves, Independence School District, 42, Camp Brickway, and then all of our county offices.
And the plans are amendable throughout their life?
This is the final copy?
Yeah.
This is the final draft?
Yeah.
Good for the next five.
That's good for the next five. But if there were something that were changing between now and the next...
Right.
...plan review, there's amendable.
Yeah, well, if you keep thinking of a project or plan...
Yeah.
You can do the project if it's not in here. Projects don't have to be listed. Adoption of this is make you eligible for any grant you want to.
You participated in the planning, therefore the adoption of the plan makes you eligible for the funding.
As any other disaster, you know enough as textbook, where you're gonna, well, exactly, whatever's in this plan, it's like our emergency operations plan. Every different scenario is different, but it's a guideline. I think Victoria, happy to recruit by, you said it once already.
Yeah, it's been a providing, it's been provided state.
Any other questions or concerns?
Do you think you'd like to pull off later? Might cut to the chase, I mean, is there anything in there that obligates us?
No, nothing obligates it. Mitigation, if you get time to look through it, it's threats. Man-made disasters, man-made threats, natural disasters, you know, from an ice storm to a blizzard, from fire to severe heat, severe cold, you know, natural threats, a hundred-year flood.
Things that are specific to this region are in the plan. Not a tsunami or something like that's not going to be listed in here because that's not, you know, something that we would incur, you know, experience.
There's a lot of information in there, I mean, from geological studies to breakdowns of households.
Topography.
If we had an area of Little Falls that was a problem for flooding, you know, we could make a night or something out of this plan for future, you know, flood year after year, year after year, you know, as a kind of mitigation. I'm asking questions and everything. No. I understand, it's a lot of, it's a lot of common things.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next, grabbers' negotiation parameters.
So I met with the two existing haulers, talked about the upcoming things that we want to see and informed them that what I'd like to see in the boardroom in any of the negotiations is that the council sets parameters for what we want to negotiate with the next contract, as our contract ends with them at the end of this year. We've already talked about a few things that we wanted to investigate and how we can, you know, of course, get those implemented, offer to the haulers that if cans, the city would likely be the ones purchasing the cans, take that risk out of their plate. The other side of this, who we offer to pay the tipping fees so that we can handle the risk for the cost of the increase. One piece of information that came up since then, after meeting with them, was they were concerned about the possibility that if we negotiated and then recommended adding a third hauler to the negotiations, if that would come into conflict with any state statutes or rules regarding organized collection that the state has established. To my knowledge, I didn't think there was any conflict with that because the state statute is very clear, but it defines moving from an open system, that's where you don't have, anybody can pick up any resident in town to an organized system. And they have very strict procedures and timeline to do that. It takes about six months to actually implement that system. They're asking for further research. I asked the city attorney to look into this and she did. She found no case study on the matter and no statutory information on the matter. However, she did refer this question to the Leamons of the cities. And they came back with some other information and said that the city of Arden Hills was looking at a similar situation to ours where they had an existing contract with an organized collector and were going to, wanted to add another party to it. Once they did that, started that process, they received a cease and desist letter from an organized garbage collection group, sort of a union or basically an ECLO of garbage haulers. And said that they wanted them to stop that process and keep the existing contract as it was. Arden Hills took the matter and just, I guess, made things satisfied, chose to negotiate with the existing hauler. So that's the only piece of information that we have to kind of go on with moving forward with this if we were to add a third hauler. So while Tony isn't here tonight, her recommendations are about how we proceed would be to, if we wanted to add the third hauler, we put ourselves at risk of litigation and we would be basically become a test case on the matter. Since there's no case law or clarification from the state statute to how you would change an existing contract prior to renegotiating or without having, you know, no contract in place. So if we were to move forward, the risk would be that the existing haulers would bring us to, bring a lawsuit on us and we'd have to defend ourselves. The other scenarios that were recommended were to be to completely go through the reorganization process again, the one that's defined the state statute. We defined the parameters of what we want to see in an organized collection and named three haulers, the parties that we want to negotiate with. Or else, a third option would be remove the organized collection with an open collection. However, we heard from the county that that is not their preference. Remove to an open collection, we were in the risk of violating their state solid waste ordinance that they have, whereas all the solid waste generated within the county must stay in the county. So if we were to just open the collection service up to anybody, Waste Management, for example, not say that they would. But if some other hauler outside wanted to pick up garbage and took it out of the county, we could potentially be liable for that solid waste. Or if they made some other landfill. So it's not a, not an easy decision or not easy options to kind of choose for any of those.
If we know our contract is ending, it's not really ending? So how long can this keep going, year after year after year, never comes to an end? How is it?
There's no clarity to it. There's no case law that's defining how that process could change and there's no statutory language that's going to say what it is that if we're into a negotiation and we wanted to change the parties that we negotiate with for the organized collection that we established, there's nothing that says how we go about it. So this information just came to us on Thursday. So, I mean, I would say we do have opportunity. We don't need to firmly establish what those parameters are tonight because there's time left on the contract to do the renegotiations if we feel we need to do more research on the matter. Since Tony isn't here, talk, work team. But that is what she said. Greg, you were going to be on the conversation.
No. You did, because I asked the same questions. I said, okay, so is it a lifelong contract? How do we get out of it? Out of it, do we have to do another contract? And then after that one, can we do one year? Can we do two years? And after that one, can we reopen it?
The only piece of information that we know in terms of lengths of the contract is that the very first organized collection contract doesn't even mean three years. After that, I don't think there's a forced timeframe. I don't think there's going to be a two-year contract.
So if we wanted to go to, say, a three-hauler, we'd have to start from the very beginning?
We did.
All over again, reorganize, everything?
Public hearings, all of it. Well, we don't know that for sure, though. Well, that is one of the recommendations that she made.
It takes approximately six months, which is very close.
Looking for a problem that doesn't exist, who are two haulers right now belong to the group that sent the letter? They have contacted attorneys. They told me this in my... Are the two current haulers?
Yes.
As far as I'm concerned, if they're looking for legal protection, shout out a local hauler, then I say we just open it up. I mean, if that's how they want to play with their neighbors.
Well, plus the fact this one of the haulers bought out, somebody who was in on the original organized contract, it's not even saying hauler anymore, just the name.
What do you mean by open it up? Because if we open it up to anybody, then we go through what John said, we reverse core granting, we get into problems with the county, you know, there's violations there. If we want to reorganize, go through that entire process. You know, that's...
There's other garbage haulers already picking up stuff here. Do they haul it out of the county? And how are they handling that already? Two or three of my neighbors use, I guess, allied waste. Car comes around, grabs the thing, dumps it at the top, they drive off.
We're not liable under our system for that.
So if we open it up to anybody, why would we be liable to it?
Probably because we're part of the organizing it. Or they're above it or not.
I don't know the legal implications of that. I just know what the county said in their joint meeting is that they would highly, they want us to stay in an organized collection system. And I know that that's their ordinance is, waste generated within the county, it's to stay within the county.
So what I mean is, we must be having to do that already. If that's the rule that has to stay in the county, they must be taking it. Do you want to answer the way?
Well, wouldn't it be enough to go from bags to cans, to redo a reorganization? If we're looking at going to cans?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's the question. I think we can establish in the next contract what the terms of the contract are. It's who we're negotiating in that contract, is what the question that it proposed was.
So really, the garbage people are holding that over our head, that they don't want... And I can understand, there's probably two, and they don't want the third one to come in. Is that part of what the whole thing revolves around with these other two garbage haulers? That they don't want?
I'm not saying that, is what they definitively told me. I said in the meeting, they said they've contacted attorneys and they should, that I should, they recommended that I look into that, ask that question. I did, and I got the answer, and I got that as an answer. So they...
And what are the Leamons of the cities? The ones that fight with us on our lawsuit, they're recommended?
Tony would not say that everything that the LEAP says is their, just is their opinion, is their research in the matter. They always would defer that back to the city's attorney as a recommendation. They don't ever say that anything is, you have to do this or you don't have to do that. They're just an advisory group, they...
What's recommendations?
Best question, best information.
There's a lot of other towns that change garbage people, like, I don't quite understand how this works with the contracts up.
Why even have a contract when it's...
Why do we even have a contract in place? I mean, what... You know, usually you sign a contract between you and me, when the contract's up. If you want somebody else to do whatever you do, or if I want to change to somebody else, I can. There's no, the contract's up the first of the year. We either sign it for another year or two, or we move on.
There's a difference, I hate to say it like this in such general terms, but there's a difference in the way that organized collection contracts are because of the way the state established how they're created. We're essentially assuming all the responsibility for the solid waste pickup for our residential customers, the citizens. And then we're hiring people to do that for us. Because we went through this organization process, we weren't the ones picking it up before. And we went through this organized process, then we are assuming the responsibility for those haulers to pick up that solid waste. I'm not certain why we can't modify who's picking that up before we go into, you know, when we're renegotiating the contract, but there's nothing, there's nothing in place that defines what that is. So the problem there is we become the definition to it and that's up to a judge to decide.
We've got all the keys for doing that.
Can I ask a question without getting up? So if you renew this contract for five years and one of your current haulers, the minute they have that contract, they call Waste Management and say, I'm selling to you, you're telling us in 100 years, Waste Management then is still going to be hauling your garbage? And so you're being held hostage by this contract? You know, you took 100 customers from us when you annex Riverwood Inn and we weren't compensated in any way for those. And yet, you're being held hostage, no matter how bad the service, how good the service? You have no options? I find that really hard to believe.
I think we should just wait for Tony to get back and she can give us her. I think we should, I think more research.
Can I ask one question? I feel like we're being held hostage by our current contract holder. And I frankly, on behalf of the residents, don't appreciate it.
No, I don't.
Well, nobody does, but Tony's point was, do we want to entertain another lawsuit? And then you're putting the residents at risk of another lawsuit, attorney's fees, possibly a fine or a loss in court, and then reverting back to the way it was. So, you know, that's why we need to hear more from Tony because, well, we weren't happy about it either.
We were actually discussing it.
John was excited about it.
We were discussing a different topic and all of a sudden the phone rang and it was that answer.
It was dropped on us and...
Very little time to answer.
That's what was said. Interested in getting into another lawsuit. And Arden Hills, you know, there's, I would talk with them also because there's a reason they said, we're not going to, you know, play that.
Tony, any special word?
We have time to reorganize and start over, though, correct?
It would be tight, but yeah. The risk is at the end of this contract, how do we manage then the collection afterwards? If the reorganization had worked out.
I think you want to get in touch with Tony and get her ducks in row and be back next meeting with some more information. You kind of know what her questions are. Probably can't hear.
And we have the same.
Probably get out of it, right?
And if we are pushed to a timeline, I want to extend that contract for more than a year. Give us time to look at things.
Well, that's what I asked if we do that. What the minimum timeline was, we could go and be fair and do the best for the residents. So that was asked, hopefully, to get those answers for us.
Okay, on 138th Street?
All right, in order to, in fact, you got, basically it's a draft agreement between the county, the city, and Little Falls Township. The area that we're talking about is 138th Street. It's down on the south side of town, 4th Street, goes over US Highway 10, continues east. on the south side of town, Fourth Street, goes over US Highway ten, continues east. Uh, you'll notice where, if you've ever driven the road, there's a stretch where it's blacktop, the blacktop continues down to the airport, and then there's gravel that goes east and west, and it makes the ninety to go south, and then, uh, turns as well to go, uh, over to John Deere Road. This is the stretch that we're looking at right into here, from, uh, where it turns from blacktop, or the blacktop gravel heat, all the way over to, to John Deere Road. The county met with the township on the sixth of June, um, just to kind of go over the framework, just to see if the draft memo is, uh, what's agreeable to Little Falls Township, they were in agreement. Tonight, I'm just looking to get your perspective, um, on the agreement as well. John, if you can go to the, the next slide here. Little Falls is a little unique, where we've got essentially three north-south, uh, areas that bisect the, the city, we've got the railroad tracks, we've got the Mississippi River, and then we've got US ten here. Um, so when we're looking at transportation routes, um, those are really the, the areas that are problems for us to give people where, where they need to be. We've got a number of them going north and south, we've got tenth, eighth, sixth, Limburg Drive on the west side, and then on the east side, you know, we've got First Street, uh, we've got Fourth, we've got Sixth, um, and then Eleventh Street here, and then finally Eighteenth Street. Now, looking at the east-west routes, we've got, uh, twenty-seven in through here, we've got Fifth Avenue southwest, we've got Fifth Avenue southeast, and then Fourth Street continues on, uh, down into here, and then a little stretch up on the north, which is Thirteenth Avenue. So, looking at the, the corridors in terms of transportation and where you want to go, the north-south, it's pretty well, you know, taken care of with all the, uh, routes that we're able to get, but the east-west ones are what we're, what we're looking at, and the most logical one is this Fourth Street here, we already got the bridge that's in place, uh, we've got a road most of the way here on the south, and the township and the county would be working on extending that through. So, the talk right now is to extend this all the way over to John Deere Road. Our part of the project, because we own the right of way where the blacktop ends to the first corner, uh, would be to purchase the additional right of way needed in through there, turn that over to the county, the county would then construct the road. Uh, we've done projects like that in the past, like on Pollers Drive, we purchased the right of way, the county constructed the, constructed their own, you can, a county road. The township would be doing the same thing, they would purchase the, the right of way, turn it over to the county, and they would, would, uh, construct the, the road into there. So, I guess, uh, I wanted to just throw it up there to the council to make sure that you were comfortable with that, uh, before we've worked any further on the, the framework. Like I said, the, the agreement in front of you is just a, a draft, um, in terms of what we're looking at, at, at doing, but, uh, wanted to get your perspective on, on the agreement.
Greg, at one point, I believe there was discussion of, uh, extending Eighteenth Street.
Correct.
All the way so it can get to the airport.
Yep, um, Eighteenth Street is slated as a state aid road, so we do have that, um, in there as well, we've got the right of way all the way from Marianne Avenue down to one hundred and thirty-eighth on the south. Obviously, it hasn't been constructed yet, if this goes through, likely at some point in time in the near future thereafter, we would look to extend Eighteenth Street through as well. That's just another nice route, so if somebody lives, you know, over in the southeast side of town, they can come around this way, uh, and bypass most of the lights and, and traffic into there to get where they're, where they're looking to go. So, that would connect up to Eighteenth Street at some point, yes.
Much right of way don't we have?
I believe.
Tony, we just need to widen it?
We need to widen it, I believe right now at sixty-six, we'd need to widen, widen it to a hundred feet, so we'd be looking at about sixty and a half feet on either side.
Any other questions? Turned?
Any idea how much that would be?
I don't. We'll have to work with a right of way acquisition specialist, um, to work with the property owners and get a, a fair price on, on the property.
Anyone else?
I like the idea, because right now it's a little, unless you want to call some avenue for.
You're going to go straight east?
Anyone going to go straight east? And granted, the, the two curves really are not our jurisdiction, they're the township's jurisdiction, um, but those two curves aren't really substandard, I mean, there's a sharp ninety-degree, uh, curve, and, whereas, you know, going straight through, you'd be looking at the statutory fifty-five mile an hour speed limit into there, and technically that's what, these should be something closer to that, which they're not, they're probably closer to fifteen miles an hour, um, but those two, those two corners are definitely a, a safety, safety concern, um, granted, it's, it's the township's jurisdiction, but nonetheless, uh, looking at it from an overall perspective, from a city transportation perspective, that makes the most sense as opposed to have the most curves in there.
Listen to talk about for years.
Yes, it has.
You have to go through the.
Yep.
Anyone else? Are you there? Fishing Museum, come on, policy member fishing.
Yeah, I stopped in at the Fishing Museum, they have a rock sale there. The old feller that started it up and all the other people, uh, they would like to have us come and take a look at their museum and talk to us about what their plans are, and they've said there's a lot of misconceptions, uh, they do want to stay in Little Falls, there's not a free building for them like what stayed it for a dollar. If they move out there, the state will put up a building and, yeah, we just have to pay a dollar for it, that's, that's a misconception, they'd have to pay for the building out there too. So, they do want to stay here, but they want to get the council support with them, and they want to inform us and show us the place, and I think it'd be a good idea, um, we'd have to agree at a certain time and get a hold of, uh, director there and hopefully.
Oh, yeah.
We'll sign the.
Yeah.
Why not open on Monday, Greg? They will open up for us for this meeting if, if you want to do it on Monday. I told them that probably five-thirty would be the earliest, because everyone works, and they usually have meetings on Mondays, so if we can have it like before a regular council meeting or a special meeting, maybe, would be a good night.
There'll be meetings for anything anymore, right? Turned over that trust.
We did. It's, uh, you know, they're investigating, researching that.
I think it would be good for us to go there and show them our support of them, listen to what they have to say, and they go to the museum. I was there two years ago and I told them that, and it's pretty interesting what's all there, but I'd be willing to do it again, I don't think anybody in the city's community, um, you know, if, if they, someone was going to approve two million dollars for a building, uh, I spoke with legislators, I said, approve it for Little Falls, if we give it to the V N R, why can't you give it to us? They've got land to get put the building on, you know, two million dollars worth of cash, they're the dollars, it's come just as much in Morse and comedy as it doesn't relax. And I think it's more vital here, uh, we have a lot of roads coming, this is the, the main vein, right, sort of fishing. If it goes to relax, that's where it stops.
Yeah.
You just didn't manage fishermen.
Well, I'd be for it if you can set something up, we do it before a meeting.
Should I try to set it up?
Six-thirty.
Before the next meeting, let's say five-thirty.
Well, next meeting's on Tuesday, because it's before, Monday, so it'd be, Jeff, it's Tuesday. That'd be our next meeting.
Okay, we have the Tuesday.
All right.
Yeah, that's fine, Steve.
Tuesday, you're opening up?
Yeah.
Anyone else got anything on your other?
I do need to, uh, add, we got a notice of cancellation of insurance, which violates our issuance of liquor license, um, so, we're looking to schedule a, um, amendment, or a hearing for that on June twenty-seventh at noon in the city council chambers. Is there anyone that has conflict that because of, we have to have a forum present? It's a one.
It's next one.
Next one.
What time is it?
You're in.
We're on a certain volume, we're not being counted.
All right, with me.
That he's not going to be in town?
He is.
You said he's going to be in town, he said that's all right with me.
Yeah, I'll make that.
Close to the, um, any?
That's Monday. We're running around here, I'll look to send me a text about fifteen minutes prior, I'll get the hammer and the way on work, yeah, um, half hour will come and go really quick, just make sure that it's not a fight.
So, it's not certain, well, all right.
Are you supplying lunch or?
Can. Anybody else have conflict with that date? I'll write through a post soon.
Should we?
Okay. Let you know if anything changes between now and then. Uh, that will need to be just added as a, agenda item.
Can you guys sound there to a public forum instruction?
Yep, it's, uh, so, stating the time for the meeting, twelve P M., June twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, location, City Hall, City Council Chambers. The issue involved is going to be the revocation of liquor license for insurance, not payment for Dan Mar's.
Okay. Oh, okay, the public forum instructions, John, go. Go ahead. Yeah, I, it's not on mine either, so, it's not, okay, dump it, back it down to server.
Oh, sorry. Uh, so that's the, it only events the first sentence, the states, individuals may address the city council about an item on the agenda or items not included on the agenda. States, individual may address the city council. Toni and I, uh, discussed this after the last meeting, so it was the question that I was, and it does seem clear that it is specific items not on the agenda, uh, public will give it, that's necessarily our intent for the public forum, items on the agenda that we discussed.
So, you need to move that to the regular agenda too, or is it?
It was included in the, I think we just included it in the consent agenda. Where we intended to move that to, but this is not the.
It's like a page on the consent.
Given.
And, and the server's back it is not updated, let me.
Okay, well, anyone else? Nothing, we'll adjourn to seven-thirty.